The meeting is ordered. Start with the pledge of allegiance. Dick Galitas?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dan? So we have before us tonight's agenda. And our meeting minutes from last, last meeting, which was April the 16th of 2024. Any, any objections or additions or anything to add to the agenda for tonight? Any corrections or adjustments needed to be made to the minutes from last meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda and the meeting minutes that I presented.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. Alright, very good. So the next item on the agenda would be open, open for citizen comments. Any citizens that would wish to address the planning permission on any business other than the five-year plan? Please make your way to the podium and just remember time is limited to three minutes. Have anybody tonight? Okay, very good. We, as you can see, we do not have any unfinished business tonight. Anybody, anything that maybe we got missed, anything that needs to be added there? No new business either. So that brings us to the next item on the list, which is the master plan five-year update. And we all have some information here in our agenda. Karen, you want to kind of lead us here in this up, this master plan update?
Yeah, so at the last meeting, I believe the commission, Mr. Cassin, went over the township's future land use map. And so we provided a, an update based on what we guys worked on last meeting. And so I would like you guys to take a look at it and let us know if everyone is in agreement with this. And if they are, then we'll add it to the draft master plan. And we are hoping to get you a copy of the draft master plan at the meeting.
So is this just part of, for my clarification, some of these, these zoned titles are slightly different than what we've had in the past? Is that also being changed in the five-year plan or is that just kind of a?
It's a generalization. It's, it's a, it's a generalization of, you know, what that land use area should be. So obviously, right currently you have office. Office is not on here, it's kind of just been lumped into commercial.
So when we look at these red areas, which would be the northeast and southeast corners primarily of the township that are red labeled commercial, but in the past we've had local business, general business, and office. That commercial lumps all three of those into one, correct?
Right, so the like, the, the master, the future land use map, it's a guide. It's not necessarily a dictation of what zoning districts must be there. But like for, you have agricultural, you have low density, moderate density, residential. Obviously, you have different residential zoning groups than that. And then, you know, we figured your current zoning of office, general business, what was the other one, commercial?
Well, commercials is what it's called on this, but up there it's, it's like, or local business, general business, and office, I think would all fall underneath that commercial category, if I'm correct.
Right. So I'd say the, the, the titles and the legends are more general land use labels as opposed to actual zoning districts. Does that make sense?
So Karen, for instance, on that one, the County Line Springborn Road, the, I see now where that is commercial, that's what we had discussed with you and with Steve at our last meeting, right?
Right.
Which is good, that's what we wanted to do, but this is what we're projecting right now, what we think is going to happen. Okay. And the other, is there any other pieces of property that, does anybody recall, is there other pieces?
There was that little triangle by, by the trailer park that we discussed.
This piece here, we talked about that.
Yeah.
And then this, I think we talked about that, all remains unchanged.
Right, right. So we're, we're hoping so.
The only, the only thing that I, I've been thinking about recently is, you know, obviously the county, Sinclair County Economic Development Group that, that has been doing all these studies for the Marine City Highway Corridor. So we have, all of this land along 26 slated as industrial. And in doing some research recently about industrially permitted usage, there is some limitations on retail operations that can happen in an industrial zone. So my question to the board would be, do we want to reconsider? Because do we, you know, is that really the goal would be to have only industrial type operations on 26? Or would we want to open that up to having some type of retail operations in that space as well?
That probably wouldn't be a bad idea. I mean, that's the five-year plan.
Right.
Yeah. And if it happens, it happens, and if it doesn't, it doesn't.
Correct. But right now, we're limiting ourselves as to what types of businesses can occupy that five, two, three, four, we have five mile stretch almost.
You could always come back with a, an address and planning permission to change that, couldn't they?
They could, yeah, they could go for a, a.
Cause they live there.
Or industrial. It's close. Right, but we're, I guess my thought is if, say somebody wanted to open a.
Yeah, but how would you, how would you put it in there?
That, that was the next question for Karen, is how do you do that? Because having say, you know, for instance, somebody wants to open, you know, any type of retail operation, that would be, you know, there's only a few permitted, retail permitted uses in the, in the industrial district. And so without having that, Jim, you know, yes, we could grant that through a special land use or, or proposed rezoning, but it just creates one more step in that person's process that, you know, to me, it doesn't make any difference if it's a retail operation or industrial operation. I think some of this, I mean, some of this would probably be better suited for more of a retail operation than industrial operation with, given that, you know, up and down these north-south roads is residential.
Well, and on top of that, John, one of the things that we had discussed a number of years ago was in that industrial zoning. And we discussed a little bit with Karen and Steve, maybe, maybe when you were on. But the, whether the industrial zoning needs to be light or heavy industrial. Or, you know, we have this, this industrial zoning right now.
Yeah, because we don't have a designation current as it stands.
Correct.
To differentiate the two.
And we typically, so far, have had an issue.
Right.
You know, not too many issues, I should say. And the other thing that comes to mind, you know, this corridor and the development of this corridor is going to be probably a lot different than what we're seeing today as we sit here. We don't know. And a lot of things are going to happen with, with Castle Township as to how we handle that. So I'm, I have reservations about that, to be honest with you. I think it's always good when someone comes into our, comes into our system and they want to change something, okay, we've got a process. And here's what we think.
And, and so my thought is if we're willing to allow an industrial operation in there, a retail operation would be less intrusive to the, to the surrounding community in most cases. Probably 99% of cases. So if we're willing to allow industrial, why are we going to make it harder for someone to come in there and operate a light business or general business type in that same area?
Yeah, but my question is then what, what part of this do you designate as business?
Can you like split designate areas as the?
You can, this is just a guide, this is just a guide. So, you know, if someone, I mean, I believe all the parcels that are in the industrial area, they're all currently zoned industrial, correct? So do you want to, you, I guess you could have two options. You could have a buffer, I guess going east, or maybe you could envision some commercial there. You already have commercial for down here, do we want to expand off that or what?
But that's just that one parcel that's already taken.
But that's, this is not.
But do you, if that's already zoned commercial, will we want to buffer off that? Or what a lot of communities also do is, you know, in their industrial zone, in their industrial zoning ordinance, there may be some language that says that zones of less intensity uses or special land uses could also be allowed. Like, I think, you know, sometimes you have B1, B2 for business districts. And in the B2 district, which is more intense, it also allows every other, any use that's also allowed to be one. And maybe for industrial, you could say any, do you have, is B2 the most? Or a commercial, any commercial use is also permitted industrial. And that would just be a potential policy change, but everything is still in the industrial designated area. But you're allowing for possible commercial, and that would ultimately happen if you guys make an ordinance amendment. But you're not necessarily moving anything on the future land use map by doing that. But that could be a part of the master plan.
So it could be just a wording.
It could just be a few languages within the master plan to consider commercial and lighter intenses, lighter intense uses in the industrial district were appropriate.
Multiple ways to get to the same point, I guess.
So do you have a commercial in Miami you would say that you think?
See, that's the thing, is I don't know how, how you would break it up, but, I mean, say.
I'm just saying, you know, not, not to break it up, I mean, what comes to mind, what business would fall under commercial, that would you see? Would, would figure along there?
I mean, I, I would think any, any type, I mean, any type of retail, I mean. What if you have like an auto parts store? I mean, that under the current industrial ordinance would not be approved in that zone because everything that they sell is contained inside their store. So if somebody wanted to come out here and put an auto zone, you know, in, in that area, they essentially couldn't. Or they'd have to go for a special land use or a variance or a petition to rezone.
Then it all depends how, how the 26 mile corridor is going to open up.
Or even, I mean, even a restaurant, I mean, anything that would, is going to potentially be up and down that road. I mean, you look at, you look at 23 mile road, you look at 21 mile road, all of those have lots of different retail up and down, you know, either side of the road. I guess I just want to make sure that for the next five years, we don't limit ourselves to only industrial operations because that's what it's zoned, and then we end up with this all as industrial for this prime section of the township.
That's good, huh? I mean, across the road, we have Ira, and that's what Ira is, and that's, you know, they're obviously right.
Yeah.
I mean, they have a number of different businesses across, across.
Yeah.
Well, how can we word that or do we change the whole map? How can we change the whole map because?
Well, I mean, I, I like what Karen said, I mean, we, we could, instead of changing the map, we could always look at the ordinance itself and make the, the industrial site plan review and the ordinances that regulate that less.
Couldn't you just add colors on it?
Yeah, I mean, either way.
Cause I mean, when, when you look at this, you're going to try to find orness, it's a better use.
Right, I agree.
I, I look at it as industrial being the most.
To the community?
To the community. And if I, if I was looking to open commercial and I saw that was all industrial, I'd go, it should be pretty easy to get special land use or variance to, to put in.
I don't dis.
Retail on auto parts or whatever.
I don't disagree, I just think that instead of giving someone an extra step in that process, let's just eliminate it now because we already know that we would, we would most likely, I mean, we, I don't see any reason that we wouldn't discover.
Well, I get it.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you didn't, well, one thing, like, let me, Tom, you didn't allow for public comment on the master plan, so at a certain point. Cause.
We'll, we'll open it.
Like right now, we're. Or while, it's up to you, Mr. Chair.
That's tomorrow about 10 o'clock. If we could, we'll do, we'll do discussion from the floor, open, or citizens' comments on the master plan after, at the end.
Alright.
That, I, I guess that's just my thought on, on this whole thing. And, you know, obviously, we don't need to make a decision right here, right now, and it's just something that I think we should consider as we continue moving forward with this, the five-year master plan. So I don't know, if you want to, you know, give that some more thought, maybe you can present next month some ideas to us as to the best way to do that, whether it is multi-coloring these parcels along that, that district or, or some type of verbiage in the ordinance, whatever you think is best.
You could even heighten it right under industrial, go B1, B2 or something.
Something like that, so.
Industrial slash commercial.
Yeah. So. That's what I had on this, does anybody have anything else? Or I know there was, we, we talked last week also, or last month rather, last, regarding the timeline and where we should be in this process. And I thank you for including this checklist timeline. Karen, what's, what's your opinion on where we stand with the timeline and where we stand with what we actually have completed?
I think we're wrapping up. Steve's basically finalizing the draft to be reviewed. We're just taking the feedback that we got tonight on this. And like I said, we're hoping to present the draft at the next meeting. Planning commission can review it, make comments, and then once we get your comments back, which I'm hoping would be at the next July meeting, we can make a decision of having a draft open for public comment. It would be available for 60 days for the public to review and make comments on. And once that is over and any additional changes made, public hearing takes place for the planning commission to adopt.
That would be public hearing like ten, early September meeting. Okay, we'll look at that.
I have a question, just above 94 on County Line there, wasn't that 10 acre parcel going to be commercial right there?
You're talking about the little, the little triangle next to the trailer park there? Yeah, I think we talked, we talked a little bit about that last, a month ago, two months ago.
Yeah, and I don't know if we really had any positive things. It's, it's kind of a dead piece of property there, and we're all trying to come up with something that'll make it work. The big issue there is, is the curve. And, you know, as we've all come over heading north on County Line, not much time to make a decision to go, make a right, even a right turn.
Right, okay, but what if you got the driveway now, you could actually move it down 50 yards from there and be right towards the trailer park open, right there. There's a way to move that driveway way down.
We're hoping if we, if we zone it, manufacture home, then the trailer park will buy it and they can make a no problem. They can access it from inside the trailer park and so on, County Line road.
It's a, it's a tough little piece of property.
And they wanted more storage areas, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, they did.
Yeah.
Did you have anything else on that, Jim? Dan?
Steve?
Nope.
Gina?
Karen, anything they had?
The only other item that I submitted for the packet was the legislative analysis for the solar bill or the renewable energy bill that was passed by the state. And, you know, right now, the township does not have a compatible ordinance with what the state is asking for. It's not that far off from what the township asks, but like the planning commission to review it and decide which direction they'd like to go, whether they would like to maintain what they currently have, whether they want to tweak the ordinance or if you just, moving forward, want the state to handle these issues.
Okay, before we move into this, because I think this is kind of outside of the master plan, but I do want to talk about this because I got a couple interesting things on this. Let me open up the, the master plan update topic to citizen comment. Would anybody like to just step to the podium and speak to that?
Yeah. Okay, Joe Stevens, Andrew Eade, Say Claire. Review, I would review the ordinance on the industrial thing. It doesn't allow retail incidental to industrial uses. So review that, look it over, and before you get, before we make any changes in that. So there's, yeah, that's, the one thing that, if you recall the Green City Highway Corridor study, they looked and they determined there was more than enough industrial land already in the master plan for five townships, Castle, Ira, China, Cockville, East China. What they found was it's kind of, because a lot of us have long, deep lots, it was kind of not being efficiently used. And in fact, John, your neighbor, was in here getting some demolition permits for Johnson's structures. He has, he was saying that we're discussing that, he has a bad portion, if someone will have to buy it really bad, you know, combined lots, he'd be well in the interest, so.
Which neighbor is that?
Clancy.
Oh, okay.
And so that's, they just, I caution you, review the different, in the, your, your zoning books, review the Castle zoning districts, okay?
I actually have that, the zoning industrial thing right here.
Okay.
So the way, and maybe I'm misunderstanding this, but letter F. Retail uses may be permitted by the planning commission in the industrial districts upon finding that one, that they meet one of the following two standards. Retail uses which have an industrial character in term, character in terms of either outdoor storage requirements or activities such as lumberyards, building material outlets, bulk storage, house trailers, automobile, agricultural implements, sales or similar uses. So basically, you have to be selling something that can't be made, held inside of a building. Or retail uses which serve the convenience needs of the establishments and employees of the industrial district, such as restaurants, branch offices of banks, automotive service stations, service centers, motels, trade schools, medical offices, clinics, similar uses. So that gives some leeway to retail in the area, but I think it's still a little bit more restrictive than, you know, I think there's some retail operations that don't fall into those categories that still would, would.
I would say though, you have areas there like at the corner that fall into that, fall in that category, just.
What do you mean the corner?
About County Line, Marine City Highway.
Yeah, right, yes, yeah, right there, the, the small commercial district.
Yeah. So, okay, that's all I have to say on this, okay?
Thank you. Anything else from the citizens?
I have one quick question, Karen. When we, what do we all have to submit to the state? When we, you know, when we're ready to go, we finalized everything here. What is our package going to look like to the state of Michigan?
When we submit to the state of Michigan, we submit the plan, we submit all the public notices that went out for the survey, the public hearing, the public review period, letters from the county and Semcog as well. There might be a couple other additional letters, I'll have to double check, but in general, all our public notices and that we've also submitted the plan to the county and to our metropolitan agency, which is Semcog.
Does it go to the county first and then to the state?
It does.
Probably.
It goes to, I think you can do them at the same time, but you have to show proof of the letter that you sent it to the county, and maybe some, maybe a receipt from the county as well. We usually respond quickly once they receive that information, yeah.
So I, I, truth be, I tried to get through this, this doc.
Was I asleep or?
But it's, I guess the other question I had, is there anything in this document that we have to submit to the state then?
Oh, for the solar win?
Yeah.
Well, I guess it, it depends on, I'm sorry, I guess I'm not quite sure what your question is. It depends what direction township wants to go. If we decide to adopt a, township decides to adopt a compatible ordinance, I don't believe you have to submit anything to the, we don't have to submit anything to the state. The state will, if it gets approved, the state does their own review as well, so.
What about our ordinances non-compliant?
There's some, there's some language in there that obviously the township doesn't have. Your setbacks are slightly different as well, not a whole lot, but there is a difference. So the height as well, the township, their current ordinance, the height of solar panels, they think can only be 20 feet, whereas the, with the new state standards, it's either 25 feet. So it's a lot of minor changes like that.
So this is interesting, this whole solar situation and, and all of these communities in this area. A buddy of mine owns property in Chinatownship. And he got in the mail, it's vacant land, he planned to build there at some point in the future, still living in his, in his other house. At his actual home address, he got a box in the mail the other day from a company who is offering to lease his property from him to put a solar farm on it. And they're offering a lot of money to lease that property. And they, they want to come out and they want to do a survey, and they're going to pay him for time, and pay him for, basically pay for everything to use his vacant land until he's ready to build on it. And it's like, there's companies out, you know, there's, there's companies out there that are, that are.
Are you guys going to approve that though?
What, I'm sorry?
Are you guys going to approve that though, for that use? If somebody came in Castle to do that?
I don't know, that's, I think what we're trying to figure out is, I, I think a lot of this legislation and these rules and regulations are going to be governed by the state that have taken a lot of that control away from us, correct?
Yes. A community can choose to basically adopt the same standards of the state, and they will be allowed to do a review, and there are collection fees that the community can collect from that. But, yeah, I mean, it's pretty much either follow the state standard or dump, and then they can just go directly to the state and apply.
So it's going to be a similar situation we have right now with schools.
Yes.
Quite right. We may not get very little input, even when Anchor Bay was going through that, whatever we're calling it on County Line that I telephoned for.
Yes, Mr. Chair, please.
Yeah, right now, according to our own ordinance, forget about the state, if someone comes in and they met the standard. If someone comes in and they met the standards of our current ordinance, we'd have to allow them to put that in there. We can't turn it down, because we'd have to show really good cause by returning them down. Okay? And Castle has a unique thing, where you have the biggest property owner in the township by far is an energy provider, superpower. Okay, they, they haven't had oil, gas, and oil on the ground, but they're looking to put solar on their own property. So that's a different twist on it. But yeah, just, but the biggest difference is, like, Karen stated, we'll be tweaking the ordinance a bit. But if someone, as it is now, if someone could come in for a solar farm in Castle, they'd need all of our criteria. Allow them to do it.
And that's allowable in which districts?
I'd have to review.
You know, that's, I can't remember.
But we have small, medium, large. Small is basically home use, that inspection is done administratively by the building official.
Right.
I mean, if it's all residential, then you're gonna have the small.
Small.
The medium is, is your businesses.
Yeah.
You could lock them on the ropes.
Yeah.
And the large, if I remember right, would be like in our industrial zone, you have a large piece of property, or they go out to the farm or?
Yeah.
And the, the big farm parcels are the ones that you're gonna see the, the on the ground, you know, like that one big DTU one up on 69?
Just like Karen said, the only difference between that state one and us is some of the criteria in it.
And it sounds like we're gonna have to loosen that criteria to meet the state standard, huh?
Um, I, I would. I don't know if I would.
Well, I mean, it sounds like ours is a little bit more restrictive right now, right? Like, we're 20 feet max, they're 25, so, I mean, stuff like that.
Something else to consider, if the township were to adopt a compatible ordinance, then they go through the, you know, a community meeting process that the township has with, if, you know, if we, if the township decides not to adopt a CREEO, they can hold a public meeting, but I would say it could be possible that maybe less residents might know about it. I mean, there's still gonna do public noticing and stuff like that, but if you're not paying attention, but you're usually paying attention to what the township is telling you when it comes to public meetings, you know, it just might be more useful for residents, just to get more information about what's happening for the township where it would have to create.
Well, more to come on that, I guess, we'll take it, take the information that's given us and review this, and I'll have to let you know what we, as a planning commission, decide to do in terms of our ordinance and the state ordinance, right? Anybody else have anything on that topic? Nothing else there?
Gina, is there any question that was?
So I'm sure, I'm sure.
Move on to commission comments from the other commissioners, Gina, the other thing?
Yeah, I, well, I went to a conference in Chatham City about a month ago, and they really did have a lot to say about the alternative energy. They were really pushing that, they had all kinds of classes and things going on. But you know what? I'm looking for the information, and all of a sudden, John and me, they didn't give us any information. They did not.
How nice of them.
I know, I know. I sat through the whole thing, I, I did not like it.
Yeah. That's definitely something to keep our finger on.
Yes, absolutely.
Nothing from the board?
No, they just had elections.
I'm sorry.
They just had elections.
For ZB. And we don't have a representative from, from, what was the one that Jerry used to do?
ZB.
Oh, okay, all right. Jim's got us. Okay, am I missing anything?
Make a motion to adjourn at 7:34.
All right, got a motion and a second to adjourn, all favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? Eric?